Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to the McIntosh County Board of Education's Regular Business Meeting for May fourteenth, twenty twenty-five. If you would please stand for the invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. Our Father God, we thank you and praise you for this day. God, we thank you for your many blessings. We continue to ask your blessings upon our school system, our students, and our staff. And then we ask a special prayer, God, that you will continue to bless as we prepare for our graduation, and that our kids will be successful on their next endeavor. These blessings we ask and give you thanks. In your son Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Applause.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, item number three, citizens address the board. Okay, thank you. All right, we'll move on to item number four, which is our special recognitions. Dr. Williams?
Scott, do you want to introduce your civics bee winners? Or did you, Tom, did you want to introduce the civics bee winners? You want the principal to do it? You want to introduce them?
I thought Kat was gonna be here, so.
Kat is preparing for the wrong one.
Okay, perfect. Okay, well, Colette can come up and have her picture made with them. How about that?
So civics bee, it's the first time we've done the civics bee this year. Pretty good turnout, and a lot of smart kids. We have a couple going to nationals, actually three. And those in attendance with us tonight are Jade Landrum. Come on, Jade. Jade, the final one for school competition. And then the winner, Mr. Tristan Moss.
So we'll come back up, we want to do a picture. Colette, you and Tom want to come up and get in the picture? Come on. Picture Tom.
One, two, three.
Wow, that was quick. Yes.
Did I say one thing?
You please, please, Mr. Drafton.
I had the privilege of being one of the three judges, and I dare you guys to take the test they took to be in the final group that were quick to make oral presentations. Those twenty questions, if you got ten of them, you would survive. But civics bee turned out to be a great opportunity for our school system. I thought y'all did a great job with it. But I think what's really important is that we need to encourage these kids, particularly in our middle school, and Industrial Development Authority is going to pledge to be more of your partner in some mentoring in the year to come. So be well to look out for some of the things we're going to do in that. We've expanded Colette's role, and she'll be part of the new school system more often. And we think it's very important for us to encourage particularly these middle schools as they approach high school to become the best that they can be. So we thank you for putting this program together and giving us the opportunity to be involved.
Well, we thank you for being involved.
Yes, thank you.
And we would like to say a special thank you to the chamber and to Kat. Kat and Colette really ran this show, and we just showed up and got to enjoy it. So, and I couldn't get ten questions of the ones that were asked that night. So, yeah, it was, it was a good, it was a good turnout for our first one. Next up, we want to celebrate our MCA track team. Coaches, if y'all would like to come to the mic and share with us. I think y'all were on the front page of the paper today, guys.
Yeah, awesome.
Go to that mic up there and just talk. That way everybody hears you and have it recorded.
Yeah, we had a great track season. We started with a small team. As you know, our basketball team went to the finals, so a lot of these young men were on that finals team. So they got out there about halfway through the track season, so had to do some catch-up. But we took seven young men to the state championship this past weekend. We finished fourth overall, which was a great feat. And we had three state champions, which brought back home to Darian, which was, which was great, which was MJ Quarterman in the high jump. He also finished runner-up in the long jump, and he finished fourth in the triple jump. So he had quite a day. He was on the four-by-two team with, we got Keishon Tyson here, Lorenzo Reed, Neo, and Andrew. They all at times ran on that four-by-two, four-by-one team all year. But, and they won the state championship also. MJ just texted me just a minute ago. He had something come up. He couldn't make it tonight. So, and then we also had Derek Irons. He won the state championship in the three hundred hurdles. He was also on that basketball team. So these young men just, they came to practice, came to work every day, and like Mr. Willis says, show up and try your best and do hard buy into the program. And it, we had a lot of fruits of the labor. So it was a really fun group. I'm gonna miss them a bunch. The four-by-two team, the Keishon Lorenzo, we broke the school record, which was pretty big. We ran one minute twenty-eight seconds forty-four. And we were the ninth best team all classification, the ninth best time in the state all classifications. That was six A, five A, whatever. So these young men can run. Lorenzo was on the original four-by-two team that set the school record a couple of years ago, so as a freshman. But really, really good group of young men, so.
All right, if y'all will come up, guys. Congratulations. We're not tall enough.
We're gonna get lost. Might have to stand in the chair.
Congratulations.
Coach, I hear you say one of you guys broke his own record?
Yeah, Lorenzo, he was on, he was on the four-by-two team a couple of years ago that set the school record.
Yeah, okay.
And then this broker.
All right, good deal.
Hi, Mr. Willis.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Sidney, would you come forth, please? It is with great pride and pleasure that I present to you tonight, Ms. Sidney Rush, the twenty twenty-five salutatorian at McIntosh County Academy. Sidney Rush has exemplified hard work and determination as the salutatorian of her graduating class. While still in high school, she earned her associate degree from the College of Coastal Georgia, showcasing her commitment to academic excellence. A well-rounded student athlete, Sidney also shined as a cheerleader and a soccer player during her four years at MCA. This fall, she will continue her education at the College of Coastal Georgia, ready to pursue her goals with the same drive and passion that had defined her high school years. Ladies and gentlemen, salutatorian, Ms. Sidney Rush.
Congratulations.
Jackson Coley, if you'd come forward. Somewhere down there. Ladies and gentlemen, I proudly present to you the MCA twenty twenty-five valedictorian, Jackson Coley. Jackson Coley has been a model of commitment and perseverance throughout his high school career. Jackson earned star student with his SAT score being the highest in the school. Additionally, he maintained high academic achievement while excelling as a four-year member of the baseball team. His ability to balance the demands of athletics and academics is a testament to his strong work ethic and determination. Jackson's dedication on the field and in the classroom has prepared him well for the next steps in his journey. Jackson will attend Georgia Southern in the fall. Ladies and gentlemen, MCA valedictorian, Jackson Coley.
Congratulations.
All right, Ms. Willis, while you're there, you want to talk about your retiree?
Mr. Ross? Retirement's always bittersweet, and I can tell you this with all sincerity, that we are losing an exceptional elite instructor and person in Ms. Colleen Tavoris Miller. She, she been with us for a few years now. She came, I think, five years ago, had a momentary lapse of reason and left us and came back. And we were so happy that she did. You know, she, but she has done so much. She was the paragon winner for the entire district, and it speaks volumes to who she is and what she has poured into the students and children of McIntosh County for years now. She is a big part of what has happened with the high school, with the community, and with these kids. And with great respect and great honor, I have been blessed to be able to work with her and seeing her work with our kids. It's been nothing short of spectacular. Ms. Tavoris, we appreciate you and wish you well in your retirement.
As a parent, my child loves this tea.
All right, so Ms. Carol Amerson. I had the pleasure to know Carol as a, as a parent, and I taught her daughter Meredith. And you could tell right away that these were quality individuals, both her and her husband, Andy, who's also here tonight. And that, that was no different in the classroom. She taught a few different subjects for us. Taught eighth grade science, then moved over to eighth grade ELA, where we had some of our best writing scores ever, and then went back down to seventh grade science, but she continued that care for the students. Cross-curricular writing strategies were definitely there, but it was more than just that. Carol cares for the whole child, and we're talking about skills that they're gonna need in the future and to develop themselves later on into adulthood. She's also very active in the FCA, the Fellowship of Christian Athletes, and Andy is as well. We've been so pleased to have her for the past fourteen years, but now it's time to let go and to let her move on to the next chapter in life, which is spending some time with her grandchildren.
Amen.
Congratulations, Carol. We're gonna miss you a lot. And a token of our appreciation from MCMS, thank you.
Well, Mr. Booker's up. The other civics bee winner came in, so we're gonna let him do that.
See, our last civics bee winner was Michael Pearson, eighth grader, great student.
Hey, let's see, will the other two civics bee winners come up and have a picture? Maybe this one or three of you together?
No. I was waiting to see.
Yep. Boys try to get out on edge.
And then our last recognition and nod is Mr. McNair, who, oh, I begrudgingly touched his car up there, but I'm personal friends with his wife, so she said I had to. Ms. Luria's here to help him celebrate tonight. I don't even know where to start with Mr. McNair. Mr. McNair and I have known each other for quite a while. He was my lead special ed teacher when I was a high school principal in North Georgia, and then a couple of years after that, I promoted him to assistant principal. And then when I moved here, we had an opening, and I begged him, been begging to come, and Ms. Luria said no. And Ms. Luria retired, and so the next time I asked him to come, she said he would come. So anyway, we have been blessed to have Mr. McNair work for us. He has been our special ed director and, well, director of special ed and healthcare services. He's been very instrumental in streamlining, streamlining a lot of our special ed procedures, and he has been the key point in getting that Tiger Clinic up and running, which we are so very proud of. So to say I'm gonna miss him is an understatement. Even though he tells the story every time that when I first interviewed him, I said I didn't want him as my lead special ed teacher, and I didn't. But he grew on me, so. So I said, when I hired him, I said, your job is to keep me out of court. Keep me out of court. Because we had had several special ed issues, and so he kept me out of court. That's it.
I had y'all on video.
Thank you. Do you want to make your question? Yes. Mr. Russell, thank you. You mean Keith.
Oh, he blushes them.
All right, we want to congratulate all of our special recognitions, everyone tonight that received an award. We're very proud of all of you. If you want to stay for the remainder of our meeting, you're welcome to do so. If you want to be dismissed, you can leave. But you're more than welcome to stay.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank y'all.
One of the best hires I've ever had.
She didn't even call them all. Cause she don't make sense. Homeland Security? Okay. No, I don't know that. I was just asking. I don't know.
Thank you.
Mr. Jackson, thank you. We love you.
Oh, okay. I didn't know. I just didn't know that.
All right, Mr. McNair. You'll have some work to do before you leave. You can't quit till June thirty.
Uh, Dr. Williams told me not to wear my preacher strap today, so I'm gonna be quick. First of all, I want to thank all of our board members. Back in twenty twenty-three, after we had came out of the pandemic, we were having a lot of difficulty with our kids with social-emotional issues, behavior issues, and it was quite a bit of a transition for our kids. One of the things, and I've talked to you guys before about this, was that we were able to connect with a partner here in the local community, the area Coastal Community Health, who came to our rescue when it came to providing mental health services for our students in our schools. And so we are very proud of our collaboration with them. We see them as a long-term partner. They have been there when we've needed them. So tonight, what I wanted to do, besides thanking you guys for supporting the clinic and everything, was to kind of give you a year in review about the clinic, you know, some of the numbers, what we're, what we're doing, what we're planning to do for the future. As I told you guys before, School-Based Health Clinic, we're the only school-based health clinic south of Savannah. And so at this point, we've had three school districts, Liberty County, Long, I think Camden, and Brantley. I've had meetings with because they want to know about the success we're having with our, our school-based health clinic. And so we've been very happy to talk to them about it, give them some options as far as what they need to do, as far as setting this up. You guys, like I said, were very instrumental in supporting us, along with Mr. Moss, through the renovations and everything that needed to take place. The cost didn't come out of our pockets at all. The clinic was financed through community, Coastal Community Health, and through Edna, one of our partners who provided some renovation costs. So we're very happy. So today, when I, basically, this evening, I just want to give you guys an overview, like I said, a year in review of what we've done in the clinic. Again, the benefits of a school-based health clinic, kind of touch on a few of these, increased healthcare access. We have students in our buildings that don't have a primary care physician. And so what's been great about that is that we've been able to provide services and become their primary care physician at our school. So now our parents actually have access to medical care for their kids. One of the other things that we've looked at is decreased absenteeism and tardiness. It's hard for a teacher not to show up when you have a clinic in your building. And now if the nurse basically says you're sick and you need to go home, it's a lot easier for them to go. But our teachers have been doing great as far as coming into the clinic if they're not feeling well, and then getting the excuse as opposed to calling out, and then we're having to find someone. So that's been really good. The whole child collaboration that we've had with our teachers and everything that we're doing in the school, where we're focusing on academics, the social-emotional and the well-being of our students has been great. We're still in process as far as putting the pieces together, but the health clinic itself serves a tremendous role in making sure our kids are healthy. And our nurse that's there in our clinic, Nurse Teraz, she's doing a great job. And I'll be sharing with you in a second some of the things that she's wanting to do for next year. At this point, we're gonna keep it the way it has been. You guys basically said that once we opened up the Tiger Clinic, who would have access? We're gonna continue to make sure all of our students have, or that are enrolled, have access to it, and all of our employees have access to the clinic. Some of the services provided, we've talked about this before, the well-child check exams. We've got a lot of three, four-year-olds coming in. And guess what? After they get their shots and stuff at the health department, a lot of them are coming into the clinic and getting those well, well-child check exams, which is good, because now we have a history of them and know what needs to happen as far as any ailments or things that they may be bringing in with the school. We have sick appointments. We've done behavioral health counseling, which has been a godsend. And believe it or not, if you go into the clinic and there's a prescription that needs to be written under our three forty B with the, with our FQHC, we're able to write prescriptions. So our teachers are able to get prescriptions after they leave the school, and if they come in early enough, some of those prescriptions can actually be delivered to the clinic so they can pick it up before they go home. So that's been a real good thing. The biggest, I guess, push within the clinic has been the lab services. We're doing daily lab services, so it's almost, something's going on with our teachers or our kids where we need to do COVID tests, strep, flu, a lot of different things that are going on that, that our nurse is able to do in the clinic. So again, that's one of the benefits of having it on campus. Beginning in August of twenty twenty-five, we've been fortunate because Coastal Community Health hasn't charged our, our recipients, our, our patients, any funds or any copays as they've come in. So basically, they've been absorbing all of the copays, but now the insurance requirements are that if they come into the clinic, they're gonna have to have an appointment like everywhere else, and that they're gonna have to come with their copay. So we've, they've, I guess, given away thousands of dollars in services without having to charge. Now, when things move forward as far as the copays and the co-insurance, the sliding fee scale will still stay in place. So if the parent, child can't afford it, we're not gonna charge them. So in other words, no one will be turned away if they can't afford to have care in our clinic. So that's, that's really a good thing that we're continuing. Wanted to kind of give you an idea of some of the numbers. If you look there, type of clinic appointments, we've had a total of eight hundred and thirty-one since January of last year through December. Now, these are enrolled patients, not people that just walk in, because one of the requirements is that when they come into the Tiger Clinic, they have to fill the paperwork out and be an enrolled patient before we can actually see them. So as you can see, as the year went on in January, when we first did open the clinic and then did the open house in February, we were steadily increasing the number of appointments that were actually taking place in the clinic. So I can tell you now, talking to Nurse Teraz, we'll probably double those numbers so far at the beginning of January of this year. So next year, when we give an update and review, you'll see those numbers go up substantially from where they are now. This is what, this is what I found interesting, which is the Tiger Clinic by age groups. As you can see in our three-to-eighteen-year-olds, it looks like our ten, eleven, and twelve-year-olds are actually spending more time in the clinic when it comes to visits and stuff. And these are actually patients of the, of the clinic. So when you look at the numbers to the left where it says thirty-five, eleven, our eleven-year-olds have visited the Tiger Clinic at least thirty-five times over the course of one year. And then you can see the numbers as they go down. The young adults, this, which is mostly our younger teachers, you can see the twenty-six-year-olds. I don't know what's going on with them, but apparently they're, they're having some weekends and not wanting to come in. I can tell you, on the weekends, on Friday, when our kids leave, on Saturday, Sunday, when they return on Monday, not only do our clinic is full, I've been over there where I've had, parents are actually waiting in the cars to get in the clinic because their kids are sick. And that includes our school nurse also, who's actually seeing them. So again, they've come to me talking about the amount of space that they need. And I said, well, right now, we're gonna work with what we want, what we have, and we'll continue to look at it as the future, as, as the future permits and stuff. So again, we've seen some increases with the twenty-six-year-olds, and so we're, we're working with them to see what's going on. Like I said, Nurse Teraz has some ideas about how to work with them a little bit more as far as being more in attendance. But the good thing about it is that when they're sick, they stay at work a lot of times. They, they make it through the day and knowing that they're gonna get a prescription and things, which helps us and helps the school itself as far as finding a substitute and that type of thing. And then our final group, the thirty-eight to seventy-nine-year-olds, that kind of gives you a range of the students that have actually been in, or adults that have been in our clinic. So you can see our forty-eight-year-olds, I guess that's one of those twenty-six to forty-eight where they decide that they need to use it. But they're actually using it a little bit more. But this is staff and teachers. This is not just teachers in the building. This is across the board, bus drivers and everything. So when you look at the seventy-nine-year-old, that's probably one visit because they were sick and needed some blood work and that type of thing. So that worked out really well. Before I get into the Student Leadership Ambassadors, which is a program that we're gonna start next year, one of the things I wanted to share with you guys was the, the school nurse visits at our schools. And the numbers are pretty shocking because I, I looked at them earlier and couldn't really understand what was going on. But when I spoke to the school nurses, they said they get a lot of kids in every day at every one of the schools. Give you an idea, over since August of this year, this past school year through April of this year, MCA has had one thousand six hundred and forty-two visits from students at the high school to the clinic. Out of those, out of those students, twenty students had to be sent home, which represent about one point two percent. So on average, they're seeing about ten kids a day in that, at the MCA nurses' clinic. At MCMS, two thousand five hundred and sixty-six kids visited the clinic, clinic up until April of this year. Eighty-seven of them had to be sent home, which is about three point four percent, or on average, about fifteen kids every day is visiting McIntosh Middle School's nursing clinic. And what was really shocking, because we're the, they're the largest school, was Todd Grant. Six thousand three hundred and twenty kids. Six thousand three hundred and twenty kids. Out of those six thousand three hundred and twenty, one thousand five hundred and eighty were sent home. Now, that's twenty-five percent. You're talking about missed instructional time. That is the reason why our nurse practitioner is really focused on doing more health education and helping the kids develop better habits in school and out of school. So, our nurse in our school, in Todd Grant, she's seeing about thirty-six kids a day. On Mondays, it could be as high as fifty. So, she's seeing a lot of kids and trying to get the paperwork and call parents and things like that. So, it's pretty remarkable, the number of kids we're seeing. We're hoping that twenty-five percent, we're going to look at the data to see if that twenty-five percent represents students who are actually enrolled in the clinic, the Tiger Clinic. If they're not enrolled in the Tiger Clinic, we're going to do what we need to to get them, because typically, parents will just come in, take them, and go home. And so, we want to make sure that we have some buffer there to work with them at that point. Wanted to go back to the Student Leadership Ambassadors. We're going to have a couple of students from every school that we're going to have representing Tiger Clinic from the standpoint of being advocates to promote, do health promotion, and to help these kids build leadership skills at the school level. So, again, it's all going to be about peer education, because as you know, a lot of times in the classroom, when we're instructing, our kids have a tendency to listen to kids that look like them, their same age. And so, we're going to utilize the Student Leadership Ambassadors. Coastal Community Health has agreed to work with us to get T-shirts and do a lot of promotion within the school, like doing PTO nights and different events that we have at the school, like Educate McIntosh. So, we'll have kids involved in this process, which is going to be really good. These are some of the things, I won't go through them all. I just wanted to, Nurse Teraz, who's our family nurse practitioner, these are some of the initiatives for next year. One of the things she's big, big on is the hand hygiene. Washing your hands, making sure you do the five steps when it comes to effective hand washing, nutrition, and healthy eating. A lot of our kids eat a lot of tackies and, what are they called, taki's or whatever? Eat a lot of that stuff around the school. And so, she's not going to discourage, because what the plan is, is to go in with our school counselor, Ms. Parker. And when she's going in to do counseling instruction and health and education, she's going to also co-team with her to do health education with our kids. So, this is good. And our goal is really to start early. Not that we're going to look, not look at the middle and high school, but if we start early helping the younger kids develop the habits, then as they move along through middle school and high school, they'll be more apt to use those skills that they've learned. Physical activity has always been a big issue. She mentioned that. She said, "I know kids have recess at school, but they really need to get out in the afternoons when they get home, if they can, and just kind of move around and do some things and get away from all of the screens, the computer screens." So, that's one of the things that we're going to be working on too next year. Sleep hygiene. A lot of our kids come in, and you can tell the ones that didn't sleep well last night are kept up. They're a little irritated. So, we're going to talk to them about working on some bedtime routines and things like that. And then, the mental health and stress management, which I mentioned earlier, was always a problem in the school system several years ago. And we've pretty much got a pretty good handle on that right now. We still have a licensed counselor coming to our middle school that's working with schools, with students. We have our Apex counselor, who's now a licensed professional counselor, that's at the elementary school, and she works with all three schools. So, I usually keep an update on who she's seeing and why she's seeing them and some of the things that's going on to see if we need to escalate the support up to Coastal Community Health. And so, at this point, they're doing a great job. The kids that are seeing the therapist, they're making progress. And the good thing about it is that they're returning to school, because we had, we went through a period where kids were not coming to school because of all the anxiety and stress that they were dealing with. But now, they're coming back to school. And so, that's a good thing. Personal hygiene is going to always be an issue, which means we're going to make sure our kids are learning to brush their teeth. We're going to have toothbrushes and have some demonstrations on things that they need to do as far as taking care of their own personal hygiene. So, these are really some of the big things that we're going to be looking at for next year. This last slide here, this is what I put down as far as crisis intervention and community response. One of the great things about the partnership with Coastal Community Health is that when we had the Sapporo Island tragedy with the gangway, they reached out to us and said, "What can we do?" And they made themselves available to all of the residents. It was not a charge related to it. They just said, "Whatever we need to do to help in this crisis, we're here for you." And so, that was really big for them. And that was really the first time that they had reached out for, to us about some crisis or tragedy that happened. The next one was when we had our coach at the high school, who suddenly died in November. And they sent their behavioral health team out. We dispatched our counselors from all the schools, and they spent the entire day, they were there for several days, working with students, because a coach that passed away had really good relationships with kids, and some of them had a lot of difficulty dealing with the law. So, that was one of the good things. But, and then, just recently, which really broke my heart, because I saw this young man, this little fourth grader, playing ball down here with leisure services. And he was an outstanding athlete. And unfortunately, he had an accident on his four-wheeler and passed away back in March. And again, Coastal Community Health Counseling Team, our school counselors, what I was most impressed with, the number of pastors that came out. I mean, we had a building for, if there was a pastor within twenty-five miles, they were in our school. And even the sheriff's department was able to send, like, I think they sent some dolls or something for the kids to really kind of work with coping through that. So, it's been very rewarding working with the community and all our community partners to make sure things, our kids are taken care of, our teachers are taken care of. And believe it or not, a lot of our teachers had some difficult, a lot of difficulty when they heard about this. And so, we just commend them, our community, for being a part of our school system and reaching out and being a part of everything that we do. Okay? And how and when can student staff access the clinic hours? We started at eight o'clock when we first started back in January and realized that we needed to open a half an hour early because they were lining up at the door for service. So, again, this is our year-end review. The clinic is operating very efficiently. Like I said, at this, starting in August, they're going to start taking copays. So, if you go in, you need your debit card or your credit card and stuff. So, they're fully operational. They can work with referrals to other physicians. I think it's Brunswick Pediatrics has about eight doctors that they have in their group that's part of Coastal Community Health, so we can get the referrals to the doctors if they need to. And it's kind of a priority, knowing that we have a school-based clinic, to be able to send our kids to get that help. So, that's us in a review. Are there any questions for me about the clinic, about the things that's going on?
Sounds like it's going great.
It is. It has been fantastic. And as far as funding, the clinic has been self-sufficient, more or less. And that's been a real good thing with all the changes with government contracts and grants and things. So, we're really excited about that. But just don't be surprised if other school systems are reaching out to you, because they've all come to see what our clinic looked like. And believe it or not, I think Brantley is getting ready to open theirs up pretty soon. So, we're very, and Camden, I talked to them about two weeks ago. So, they're looking at possibly doing theirs also.
Awesome. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I have a, I have a comment. So, when Dr. Chandler
Yes.
first came here and presented that idea to us, I was like, "I don't know if this is going to work." Because, you know, we were, we were putting them over there in that room, the office, and I was like, "I don't know. This is going to be a lot of legwork. This is going to be hard to get off the ground." But you did a lot of legwork for this clinic. And, you know, I think I speak for the rest of the board. You know, we greatly appreciate it. I mean, it's a, it's a good tool for our system. And it's worked out great. And I want to take this opportunity to wish you, or congratulate you on retiring. And I wish you luck and travel and see the world and, you know. She agrees with me.
Whatever she said.
She's already got the trips booked.
Sounds good.
I can tell you, and I don't know, Dr. Williams, share with you, I am on the board with Coastal Community Health. And I intentionally positioned myself to get on that board with Dr. Chandler and his group, mainly to make sure that we were getting what we needed here in McIntosh County. And as I've been able to pick up the phone, like, when we had the tragedies and call him directly, and he was able to call counselors, his behavioral health team, and have people here right away. So, I may be not physically here, but I am going to still be active with the board. And so, anything come up, you'll know how to get in touch.
Oh, yes.
Now, cruise ship, I do not take my phone.
He's not allowed. He's not allowed to take his phone on the cruise ship.
Thank you.
Sir, thank you.
Well, he'll be retired if he takes his phone.
Maybe nobody will call, huh? Okay. We'll move on to item number six, which is the approval of our regular business meeting agenda. Could I have a motion?
Motion.
Okay, motion by Mr. Straggles, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. McIver. All those in favor? Motion carries five zero. All right. Item number seven is the approval of our consent agenda items. These items include numbers eight through twenty-two. Could I have a motion?
Motion.
Okay, motion by Mr. McIver, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Hewitt. All those in favor? Okay, motion carries five zero. All right. Item number twenty-three. All right. We'll get a motion in a second, Mr. Moss, and then we'll move into a discussion. Could I have a motion?
Motion.
I'm sorry, let me read the motion. Superintendent, sorry. Superintendent recommends contract for janitorial services not to exceed five hundred seventy-one thousand dollars. Could I have a motion?
Motion.
Okay, motion by Mr. Straggles, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Hewitt. All right. Now, we'll move into discussion. Mr. Moss?
Great evening, board. It's a pleasure to stand for you tonight. And I'm really excited about the direction that McIntosh is going in. Whenever you have a big contract like this, it's a big decision. It takes a lot of foresight and a lot of planning ahead of time. Last year, around this time, a little bit earlier, we were considering moving to another company, but we decided to give this, the company that we have currently, another opportunity to show us some of the changes that they were making. And they did some incredible things and made some adjustments. However, at the end of the day, we had to take a look at whatever our other options were. And we did a great process. We had an RFP that was out there on the procurement registry. We posted it on our local organ, in the Darien News, and on our website. And we went through all the steps meticulously. And then, we had at least eight companies, I believe, that applied. They did a walkthrough of our system. We went to every little crevice and every corner, and they walked through and gave us a competitive bid. After that, Ms., Dr. Williams, Ms. Franklin, Keith Mixon, our director of maintenance, myself, all met together, and we narrowed it down to three. After that narrowing down to three, we even took it one step further and had a panel with two board members. Thank you, board members, for attending that. That was really great to see you there. And we had the three top, the finalists, present to us. And after deliberation, it wasn't, it wasn't a hard choice after we heard what we heard. Just the benefits of what this new company is going to do is very positive. We're excited about it. We already have a transition plan that was sent to us today. It'll be a smooth transition. We won't miss a beat for this summer. And we know that this is the most critical time in custodial services, is that preparation in the summer. So, our timing is spot on. With your approval, we can sign a contract very soon and have the very smoothest transition and never miss a beat with our floors. They're prepared to bring in outside staff if needed as they transfer all the needed equipment and everything. One good thing about this company is they will take our recommendation for who stays and who possibly needs to have a change in position. So, none of our local employees are at risk at this point of losing their job because of this transition. They're going solely on our recommendation of who we want to keep, and we want to protect them. One of our biggest decisions was based on the employees. That's who we were really thinking of. We wanted to see what their competitive, their compensation was, what time they earned off, how they could move up the ladder. And this company had a real, real plan. It was really interesting that the two people presenting in the company were both janitors in the company. And now, they were actually here as managers in a big-time role, and they were actually pitching it to us. And that really, for myself, had an impact to see that somebody could come up from the ranks and make it all the way to the top and be one of the leaders of the company. And they were, both of them said that they, they did exactly what janitors did. They were a janitor. And that was important to us, and I think all the team realized that. In addition, their references were tight. Coach Warren was part of our team on the final review, and he actually knew school systems with sports complexes that they took care of, and they were, came highly recommended. And that's important. Those areas have to be even extra clean with all the sweat and grind that comes with sports. So, I think that we made a great decision as a team. We went through the process the right way, and I'm really excited about the proposal. And we hope that you'll approve moving forward, and then we can move forward with the transition plan.
We will say that HES only deals with educational facilities. They only have K-12 schools and colleges. They only deal with education. And I had Ms. Tammy, I know that y'all saw in two thousand seventeen, what it would be if we kept it in-house. So, I had her to do that with the raises and the cost of insurance going up, and if we brought it back in-house. And that cost is almost seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for supplies and salaries. So, just a comparison there.
Any questions?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, I'm going to restate this recommendation in order to add the name to it. So, superintendent recommends contract with HES Facilities Management for janitorial services not to exceed five hundred seventy-one thousand dollars. Have a motion by Mr. Straggles, second by Mr. Hewitt. All those in favor? Okay, motion carries five zero. All right. We will move on to executive session for personnel and legal issues. Could I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Hewitt, second.
Second.
Mr. McIver, all those in favor? Okay. Motion carries five zero. We will return. Okay, the board had adjourned to executive session to discuss personnel and legal issues. Could I have a motion to return to open session?
Motion.
Mr. McIver, second.
Second.
Dr. Jennings, all those in favor? Okay, motion carries five zero. Superintendent recommends personnel report as submitted. Can I have a motion? Mr. McIver, second.
Second.
Mr. Hewitt, all those in favor? Motion carries five zero. All right. Comments? We'll start on that end.
Um, I want to tell the graduates to go and do great things and never allow anybody to tell you that you can't do something because you can do anything you want to. It just depends on how much you want it. All our students and staff have a great, safe summer. And to our retirees, enjoy your life. You deserve it, and your favorite day of the month is going to be on the first when GRS comes home. Congratulations.
All right. Well, I diddled her on all of that. And also, congratulations to our Civic B winners, our MCA track team. Amen to our salutatorian, Ms. Rush, Sidney Rush. Congratulations. And to our valedictorian, Mr. Jackson Coley. Congratulations. We're proud of y'all. Hey, go and make us happy.
I want to congratulate all of our winners, our retirees. The Skills USA team, model of excellence. I think one of the top twenty-four schools in the nation. So, that's, that's really big there. Mr. Todd does an exceptional job with Skills. And it gets better every year. So, but, you know, and I want to thank Cats Whittle. We had that last week and always enjoyed going to that. Dr. Howe, Kelly Howe? These folks come from Brunswick, and for them to recognize our students and our employees is, we greatly appreciate it. To our seniors, congratulations. Next meeting here, graduation's going to be over. Yeah.
That's right.
And
Enjoy it.
Enjoy it. That's right. But, Madam Chair, that's all I have. Thank you.
I'll echo and diddle all the congratulations and recognition everybody else has mentioned. And as an example of a person that is exceeding on her career path and her plans, I want to congratulate the new Dr. Jessica DeBerry, who received her doctorate this week.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Have her on our team, and she does a great job for us. So enjoy your summer.
Be safe.
I just want to say thank you to the schools today and our staff. We had visitors here all day with a film crew from GSBA. First, thank them for recognizing us, GSBA, but thank you to our schools and our staff and our students who conducted interviews. And it was just a great day.
Yes.
Made me proud.
It was a great day. And I think y'all have covered everything. So I would just say, congratulations to our class of two thousand twenty-five. Have a great time. Get, get out there and you gotta get in the real world. You have how many years, Dr. Jennings, before they can sit in there retired? Thirty years out. All right, anything else? We're adjourned.